Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome you to the Tuesday, September 17th, meeting of the Douglas Board of Selectmen. This meeting is being taped to broadcast live on Douglas Cable. Would everyone please stand for the pledge?
................................................
By way of chairman's announcements, Matt, let me tee this up for you to maybe take a peek at, is this the North American premiere?
Yeah, I believe it is.
Of the ICMA film preview.
So it's been previously mentioned, and I'll reiterate, ICMA TV, ICMA is the professional organization, it's an international professional organization for town managers, county administrators, city managers, mostly United States, but from other countries as well. It's a long storied organization, it's been around for over 100 years. This is our 100th conference coming up in a couple of weeks. And with the advent of video service and being able to play videos online and whatnot, they've chosen over the last several years to do best practices, features of communities across the country to feature at our annual conference. And typically, it's five, six, seven towns from the entire country. The conference current attendance is estimated at 5,500 people, and one of the towns that will be featured is the Town of Douglas. And we were given this opportunity to feature the town's economic development efforts, and CRG was gracious enough to donate the funds that were necessary. So there were no taxpayer funds used to create this. The town owns this movie and all of the film that was used to create the movie, and it will be shown on ICMA's website for a full year. So it'll be scrolling throughout the conference, but it'll also be posted on ICMA TV for a full year after that. So I want to thank all the people in town who were supportive of this little project because what we tried to do here, what I tried to do, is feature an entire generation of people who gave, most of them 35, 40 years of their lives to serving the people of the Town of Douglas. So while we are celebrating the story of what we've done over the last five years, I think we're also taking our hat off and respecting, I added it up, it's over 400 years of public service represented by the people whose faces you'll recognize as they come on and off the screen in the background as the various principals are speaking to the story. So without further ado, I will attempt technology. And the air conditioner's screaming, which is just what we wanted.
The Town of Douglas was incorporated in 1746. Douglas is a very small community. It's expansive in the sense that we have a lot of state forests, a lot of town forests. It's a beautiful, beautiful country. People come to live and work and raise their families here because it is, it is a little bit off the beaten path. Our residents, the community, really expects high level of service. We've got a wonderful school systems, K through 12. We've got fully functioning, moderate, sewer department. We've got a very robust library. We have an accredited police department. We have a 24/7 fire department that also couples as our emergency management. As we try and balance the levels of service that townspeople today desire with the ability to pay for it through our existing tax base, it was very clear that we needed to bring in new business. We needed about a 10% increase in the tax base of the town in order to be able to sustain the services that have been provided to date.
In Massachusetts, state law limits the amount of tax increase that you can put on real estate taxpayers to 2.5% a year. It's called Proposition 2.5. And in order to exceed that, we have to go to town meeting and have town meeting votes, and the town meeting electorate votes to put it on the ballot. At the election, we actually won the override by 14 votes out of close to 3,000 cast.
So with that, the ice has been...
We were in the throes of a Proposition 2.5, a tax override. There was no funding available from the town. We needed some type of economic development, and we needed it fast. The infrastructure just was not there. So that told me that we had to go to outside sources of funding. We approached the state, and we got a Masswork grant of $4 million, and then we, I applied to the federal EDA for another grant, and they came through as well. So we funded this project basically with almost $7.3 million in federal and state funds.
The scale of this project was a large one for a small system. It was fairly quick. We had to cram about a year's worth of engineering into about five to six months in order to make this project come to fruition to meet the contractors' needs. There was a lot of coordination between the town, the contractors, the engineers. We had material on hand, so we got really competitive bids, so it helped us come in under budget.
Douglas had newer versions doing the hard work, and I have to credit every department within the Town of Douglas for digging in hard, learning about the project niceties and what was involved. They communicated. They told me what they liked about the project, they told me what they didn't like about the project. After we had a plan on the table that satisfied the needs of all the stakeholders, they went into implementation. And what that meant is they became the teacher for me. They taught me their process. They guided me on what to submit, what to do. For us, a perfect scenario and the outcome that we expect is that some company finds this building and makes it their home. Now, when that happens, that's when the benefits compound. Tenant moves into a building, land value increases, more tax revenues for the town. When operations ensue, that means more jobs. Job creation is never a bad thing. When you see a project like this, and the success that it has, it increases the value of a location and the reputation of a location to sort of bring in supportive amenities and different types of development that does increase tax base just because of the, because of the success that a project shows.
So the impact of economic development on the Town of Douglas so far, the projects we have already built, is about 10% increase to the tax base. So we achieved our goal. But the infrastructure that we built is probably going to unlock another half billion worth of investment because it made a site pad-ready, so to speak. So now we have all utilities dumped at the curbside. There's a very large scenic gravel pit that is going to be sold to the same developer that built the warehouse in Douglas for additional buildings, which is going to have a very big impact on the town for the next five to 10 years.
It's really important for us as a town to find those new monies, those new tax dollars, in order to fund the very services that our townspeople are looking for. And that is really what we're looking for with the cubes at Gilboa and any other development that we have in town, that we maintain that rural character. The biggest piece to that is the location of the new world-class facilities. They are nestled closer to the highway, and with some good traffic controls, we should see traffic come in and out as soon as it comes, thereby not really impacting the town in a terrible degree. Really excited about the town. We're doing some really wonderful things. We've got a really good school program that's sending kids off to some really quality institutions. People that live in this town, that grew up in this town, look very fondly at their time here. I know, just speaking for my two kids, Douglas is home. Douglas is where they grew up. Douglas is where they learned to make mistakes, to learn to grow, learn to succeed, and it's just a wonderful place to live, work, and raise a family.
It came out great. And if you can't choke back a tear watching Ernie and Mike raise the flag, you're not human.
Oh, yeah.
Right. So thanks to all those volunteers and what they've done for the town.
Just want to take a quick second to acknowledge all your effort. I know you put a lot of hard work into this, and the results prove your efforts. Thank you, Matt.
On the Chronicle. There's a Chronicle feel to it. Anyone, moving on, anyone in the audience currently here for something that's not on our agenda? Seeing as none, we'll move right into a public hearing, St. Dennis Church, two one-day alcohol license. Come on up, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I had three daughters graduate from the Douglas School System, and they all did very well, all three, went to college, graduated, and are successful. So it was a, continues to be a marvelous school system, so, thanks.
So what are we looking to do?
So we're looking to get wine and malt license for two events. The first one is scheduled for this Saturday. It's a free pasta dinner. We've been doing this annually now for the past several years to start up our new fiscal church year after those summers, to get the parishioners are all involved. And so we're doing that Wednesday evening. And then in October, we're having a ham and bean supper. That's also going to include some entertainment from a women's group, I guess that's performed at the Senior Center. I keep wanting to say they're the, oh, what the hell? It's not, it's something else. It's the, I'm sorry, I lost it, but it's a, it's a women's group that's, that sings. So we're going to have that and the ham and bean supper to, again, it builds parishioners' support and also acts as a fundraiser for the maintenance of the church.
You've done these in the past, and there's been no issue whatsoever.
No, and I'm the license holder for, I'm tip certified, and I'm the one that manages anything that goes out. We check IDs and, and quite frankly, there's not a lot that's sold, but it's a nice offer for some folks to partake of it, but, you know, it's not a big deal, part of the evening.
Understood. Any questions, further questions?
I'm pretty cottoned dry. I know we've had it in the past, plenty of times in the past. I'll make a motion to accept or grant the liquor licenses, one-day alcohol licenses for the two events, one being September 21st, the other one looks like it's October 19th for the St. Dennis Church.
Motion's been made by Ross.
Seconded by Les.
Any further, just, oh, they probably should open the public hearing. Anyone would like to speak this public hearing portion of it? If there is none, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Seconded by Les. All those in favor?
Aye.
And now I'm going to bring back your motion and accept that with Les's second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Doug, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Chiefs are talking opioid settlement funding and an events update, which piqued my interest. Fire away.
How's everybody doing tonight? For those who might be watching on YouTube, my name's Kelly Manning. I'm the deputy fire chief and emergency management director, and we just wanted to give you an update about some really exciting programming that's coming to the Simon Fairfield Public Library at the end of October and the beginning of November. Through the collaborative efforts of the fire department, our Board of Health, and our public health nurse, the Blackstone Valley Partnership for Public Health, our library director and his staff were excited to present a program called Until Help Arrives. I think you guys have the flyer in your packet. So the series focuses on emergency skills and emergency preparedness activities, including CPR training, AED awareness, Narcan training. The participants that attend will also learn how to report emergencies, gain some knowledge of our local public notification methods, which we've been working with T.A. Wojcik on to continue to practice and utilize those. So we'll get those a little bit out into the forefront, and we'll also talk about how to assemble a home emergency kit. And essentially, our goal with this programming is to create a more resilient community, essentially by training laypeople that they can truly make a difference in the event of an emergency and help save a life before professional emergency responders arrive. The group that's working on this, so all those stakeholders that I mentioned at the beginning, we felt that it was really important to bring this up at a Board of Selectmen meeting and update you guys because this programming is going to be partially funded using opioid settlement funding monies that the town has received. And again, for those who aren't familiar with what the opioid settlement funding is, several drug manufacturers, I think there's a big three or four, that they're going to pay out somewhere between 21 and 25 million, billion, I'm sorry, to state and local governments for the company's role in creating and fueling the opioid epidemic. And Douglas has received a share of this funding. Although our department responds to luckily lower-than-average numbers of opioid-related types of calls, we feel that providing the CPR, AED, and Narcan training is still a great strategy to saving lives and reducing harm from opioid use. Excuse me. So information to sign up for this program, it's been posted in several locations. I think there's some flyers out here in town, there's some in the town clerk's office. It's going to be up on our department's Facebook page. You'll see it on the Simon Fairfield Public Library Facebook page, and apparently they have a blog posting as well. I haven't been on that, but it's on that blog that they, they put out. And the Blackstone Valley Partnership for Public Health also has it on their Facebook page. We're going to be pushing this at our open house on October 9th as well as Oktoberfest. So our Board of Health will have a table in front of the library to discuss this programming and give out some more information and swag pertaining to this and emergency planning. So two sessions are scheduled, October 24th and November 14th, both at 6:00 PM at the library. And should these two sessions generate interest, our group plans on holding more. So hopefully, this is a big success, and we're really excited to bring it out to the community.
Sounds pretty good. Just a question to the chair.
Go ahead.
Is there a way for people to sign up for the sessions, just because you could get an overflow or influx?
So the sessions are going to be capped right now at 20 people per session, just due to the space of the library. So they just need to scan this QR code, and the library's handling the registration and communication with those folks. If that answers your question?
No, perfect, just for the public to know. I mean, that it's capped and stuff like that. Hopefully, people attend sessions, it'd be worthwhile.
Yeah.
Good event.
It's important. Kudos for taking it on and keeping us safe.
Thank you.
And then were we talking opioid expenditure?
I think the finance director wants you to appropriate those funds or to declare them to be used for this purpose. So if there's an odds or already chain for the expenditure of the dollars that are restricted to the county.
Is that something we act on tonight? The only reason I'm asking is it is not passable, possible votes next to the line.
If there's no possible votes, we can't vote.
Correct. This time sensitive.
If there's any manhood that we need to take care of, we'll take care of it, whether it shows up on your agenda next, maybe that we don't have to do this. We certainly want to draw attention to the program. Two notes, if I may, Mr. Chairman. One is while we have a lower percentage of incidents involving opioids in Douglas compared to many of our nearby communities, what jumped out at me about the statistics at the meeting that we all attended in Hutsbridge was that we have a disproportionately high share of those incidents that we have in town resulting in fatalities. So any program that we can use to arm bystanders with the knowledge that they would need to perhaps engage in life-saving activity might change the outcome for some people. Some people do die alone. It's not unusual for adults to suffer that fate, but not everyone does. And if there are people around who've been to a training, who've heard through word of mouth, this is what you do, this is how you do it, it all works to the same end, which is to try to save people's lives. The second note I want to bring up is that, and I'll never forget this, when these lawsuits were filed, it was more or less that typical class-action lawsuit, you all, everybody gets the letter, it says you may have been harmed. I was at a family funeral with a table full of people at the Coalition, and the president of the Rhode Island Bar Association was there. I was sitting there, and I said, "Hey, Joe, is this something that municipalities should join? Should we..." "No, don't bother with that. All those companies will be bankrupt. By the time they settle this, there won't be any money for anybody." I never listened to Joe anyway, so we signed up, and it was really kind of an effortless thing. Once you did your class-action filings, and the police departments and ambulance departments submitted their reports as evidence, there wasn't much else for us to do. We just waited for those attorneys to settle those cases. And I think the Town of Douglas, over the course of almost 20 years, is going to take in something like 360,000 offers. So it's a, you know, don't listen to Joe, and Joe's going to die. But I guess the point is, in our society, these things do happen. When people manufacture things or engage in practices that they know harm people, and they just continue to do it as long as they're making a lot of money, they don't really care about the outcome. And it is a necessary part of the way our society works, to haul them out and hold them accountable for it. So the other day, a check came in from McKinsey Consulting, and I kind of put a little flag in my hat, and I've always hated McKinsey, and it was perfect that they were involved in this, and they cut us a check for, I don't know, $9,000 bucks, and I've been in that for the rest of my life. But the fact that McKinsey was involved meant that the very, that's the Creme de la Creme, the white shoes consulting firm, was engaged in practices of marketing and mass distribution of drugs that didn't have sufficient safeguards or warnings to put. So that's where we're at with it. We have taken the view, we being, the finance director and I, and our department heads, that a large cooperative effort to spend these funds may not really be in our best interest as the Town of Douglas. Because it looks like some of the bigger communities just want us to subsidize their broader outreach. Now, maybe they need the help, maybe they don't, but we don't work for them, we work for the people of the Town of Douglas. So we will be constantly looking for creative and effective ways to utilize those funds to benefit the citizens of this town. So I want to thank the deputy chief and chief, and all the folks, the library, everyone who's involved. Justin's been a big help in coming up with a program that we can fund, that's qualified for funding, because I think it's, in the long term, it's going to be this kind of level outreach that will actually help.
I agree.
So, I so hope. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No, that's good. And the funds in there cover our Narcan costs?
They could. I mean, the thing is, Narcan's become this thing, right? So we get grants, we get it donated, the state comes in and backs up a truck and gives us a fair amount. We are going to use some, because I believe we've had some doses expired upstairs in the police department, and no immediate replacements, so we'll spend some of these opioid settlement funds to replace that Narcan. But typically, it has been something that we've been able to get, either for free or in this crisis.
Part of this program is to get more Narcan out in the community, so any of the participants involved in this training will get Narcan to take with them. We'll also be distributing it at our open house on the 9th of October, so get some more of that out there.
That is great. All right, absent of that, keep up the great work. It's wonderful. All right, thank you.
Good night.
Moving that ball forward. CPA discussion, Sue. Would you like to come forward? Oh, and you brought a friend.
Kathy Richards.
Hello, Kathy.
Committee.
All right.
Good evening.
Good evening. Actually, if you want to...
It's going to be a pamphlet, but my ancient printer can't make it a pamphlet.
You could pass this around, too. This is the wording of the, in the ballot.
So there was rumors that voters, in addition to all the selections of candidates, will have a question before them. Tee that up for us, if you could.
Yep. Okay. It's going to be number six on the ballot, and it's the Community Preservation Act is what they'll be voting yes for, hopefully. But it's something that is, has been created by the state in 2,196 of the 351 towns have adopted this Community Preservation Act. And what it does is, it puts a surcharge on our value of our homes, so, or our taxes, so to speak. And we had the ability to choose between 1 and 3%, and we figured 1.5% would be a good one for the town. And there are exemptions, such as the first $100,000 value of all homes, commercial and industrial properties will be exempted, and low-income people will be exempted, and low and moderate-income seniors will be exempted. And we figure the, the 1.5% would be matched by the state from the funds that they collected at the Registry of Deeds. So we essentially get that money back in a way if we put it in. And of the money that's collected, 10% has to go to three different things. One of them is open space and recreation, one of them is historic preservation, and one of them is affordable housing, as is told in that, what passed out. So, and then you have another 70%, and that can be partitioned anyway amongst those three. But everything has to be voted in at a town meeting. So if there's anything that's going to be any project, it has to be approved at a town meeting. And the committee for this Community Preservation Act committee, if it does get voted in, will be people from, someone from planning, someone from conservation, someone from recrea, no, I don't think recreation, no. There's five different boards that need to have someone attending, and then various people from the community if they feel like they want to. And so expense-wise, for instance, a house that's valued at $415,000, if you get the first $100,000 exempted, $314,000, you would be, your 1.5% surcharge would be $62 a year. So it's not a really huge amount of money that we're, but it does add up to close to a quarter of a million dollars for everybody collecting. So we, on the open space committee, got the open space and recreation plan approved this last January for seven years. That plus the Community Preservation Act, if it's recommended, will enable us to get a lot of grants because we've shown that we're, you know, motivated. So that's good. So, and then we will have, you know, things, we'll have a stock fund sort of set aside that if something comes up, let's say a 61A property goes up for sale, we can act on it and have reserves to speak for it, or, you know, any, there's so many different things. I mean, the library, there's things that might not be coming up on the town headlights, you know. Some under the line might be able to fix up things that aren't huge projects that need big town funding. So that's, you know, that's about it.
And I could add, the other thing... And I could add, the other thing is, we don't have to spend it every year. We can stockpile it. So if we don't come up with, you know, a certain project, we can just defer to the next year and then see if anybody comes up with a project the next year. So it can add up.
Kind of the question I had, you just kind of answered it, was it's called the Community Preservation Act. As you said, project, what if we wanted to have another park, it would be okay to fund a park?
Correct.
Okay.
Right. I mean, it's even recreation, open space and recreation. And even like the...
We can approve all our ball parks. We can build new ones if we want. If we want pickleball, or...
We could make the ball field ADA compliant.
Yep.
So this isn't on the sale of houses, this is every year you would be assessed...
Correct.
The 1.5% of your tax.
Correct. With the exemptions.
When I first started talking about it, I was under the impression that it was on the sale of the house. What is our current levy? Any idea, roughly?
She would have been... That could help out with that question idea.
Should I take a gene page?
No, no, you could take a math page and give me a rough number. The gene page, you'd break out the slide rule.
It's approaching $14 million.
$14 million.
But our levy would include a lot of things that they're exempting, so it's a little bit apples and oranges. Because we have almost no residential properties in this town are less than $100,000. So, you know, so every single house that you see that somebody is able to occupy would be exempt for the first $100,000. So, and that same would apply to commercial and industrial. And then you've got quite a few seniors that might qualify. Not so much on the low-income side, because we already know that number because of work we did for less, but moderate...
Low and moderate, yeah.
That's gonna change, that's a different...
There's just certain levels.
So the net number might be around $10 million?
Let's say it is, because it makes the math.
Yeah, well, because if the average value of a house is $500,000 for argument's sake, and the first hundreds exempt, you've lost 20%, so even that brought me down to 13.6, so you're at $10 million, right?
And you think it, just the rough math per annum is $280,000?
I think $250,000, we, they, we've been, got help from the Coalition in Boston, and that's, they figured out a whole chart for us and what...
But it a ballpark, since...
They thought $250,000 would be what we take in. And it's not, you know, the match from the Registry of Deeds varies. It's not a dollar-for-dollar match, which, you know, might be confusing by...
You would take in $250,000, you say?
From the subsidy. That's what we figured on the housing.
So we plus, plus grants and...
So, yeah.
Grants, whatever. So that's why I was trying to get down to the net number to figure out 1.5% of $10 million is $150,000. That's why I was just trying to figure out how fast this would grow and what you could actually do that. And that's the only reason why I was asking those questions.
But it's, you know, it's better than nothing, in a way, so it...
Well, I'm not saying...
Right. No, I didn't say you said that.
Come to capital, $150,000 is a lot to me. So, it's...
And it's kind of money just sitting there. You know, we pay it anyway, we pay, you know, the Registry of Deeds, and, you know, it's money that is sitting there waiting for someone to take advantage of.
Some of these questions, people are going to want to know the answers to.
Right.
So just by asking this very basic question, what does that mean, and how much money are you going to collect each year, and all this other stuff, that's half of what that process was.
Right.
Numbers I get pretty quick.
We had a woman from Mendon that they adopted it right at the very beginning, and she came and talked to us at the beer. They took, they went for 3%, and they've had millions and millions of dollars, just because, you know, the funds get smaller as more of the towns adopted it as well. So they've made a lot of improvements.
They've done a lot of improvements, yeah.
There's actually, you can watch her on, on the YouTube from the town.
Well, it's something that could, no, sorry, that's good. It's something that could always be revisited down the road if it became a success anyways, that you could always increase it.
Correct. And you can, after five years, you can get rid of it as well.
Right.
Well, I think you made the comment that the funds are sitting there with the Registry of Deeds, you know, so that's part of the tax stamps that paid into the Registry of Deeds. But it's not, you know, there's been debate at the State House and other areas about returning a portion of the tax stamps back to the communities. But, you know, if there's no sales for a year, or the sales are really down, but, you know, the percentage of the match that you're expected from the Registry of Deeds, you know, might not arrive, right? So it's not going to be dollar-for-dollar matching.
No, it's not dollar-for-dollar, and like, they kind of grade all the towns. If it's like a really rich town, they might get less. And if it's, you know, a town that's more in need, they might get more, depending on how they grade you. And I think we were...
Like a Westboro versus Southridge, for example.
Right.
Like something like that, right?
Exactly.
So it's just the opposite of chapter 70 money.
So, so we, one-to-one collection, we, money was birthed in Douglas, we taxed it. Is it that a dollar ours, or does it go into Boston, then we're getting 70% of that?
It stays right here.
All of it.
It stays right here. And Boston has no say in it, yeah.
The 1.5% surcharge, that comes in your, if, you know, if adopted, everything else, how this all plays out, that would come to people's tax bills for a charge of, for a $415,000 house. So they would pay an additional yearly tax of $62.
Yeah.
And then that money collected by the town would be allocated into this account.
Correct.
And then the hope would be the state would come for, you know, dollar-for-dollar, some type of match.
Whatever they're matching with.
Some type of match.
It's a law now, isn't it? I mean, it's a law, so they have to do it, they have to fund it.
Well, you say that, but the state's also not funded things that they promised.
True.
You know, I mean, Quin bill, for those folks who remember that.
But I think the important thing is, the state can't take it to the town, it's all for the town.
Yeah.
And the town gets to vote on how it's used, the state can't come in and tell us how to use it.
Yeah.
It's got to be voted on by the town.
Correct. But it's a, it's a surcharge tax, or tax on, on folks to sign up for, for the preservation aspect of it. Okay. Oh, you got numbers?
I do. I don't like guessing. People put me on the spot. Sometimes I guess. In my defense, when I started here, the levy was $13,288,265. But because of the activities featured in this evening's film entertainment and the new growth resulting from where else, the levy for fiscal '25 is projected to be $22,122,220. And that's going to get you closer to a quarter million after you take your 20%.
Thank you.
I ain't to please.
And be accurate.
You made the gene reference, and you just wanted to cover yourself.
Right. So then I'm going to get shot in the head with an angel's arrow.
So, so if you think it's a good idea, we'd love a little letter of support or something to try to get the vote in.
Has there been other forums, I guess, that you brought this forward?
We've been in front of the Conservation and Planning Board.
Okay.
Yep. So we're going to ask for letters from them, too.
Yeah, my understanding was that was on the sale, the sale of a home. This kind of, my world just got jungleged a little bit, so we'll digest that a little bit.
Yeah.
And I would urge you, you know, as champions of this, talking with us is great, and the hundred or so people that will watch, there's a whole universe out there in town that likely go to the polls without any idea whatsoever as to what's going.
Right, and we're like, by the time they get to number six, they're done reading, you know?
No, it certainly would be a...
A boost for our...
A project, you know? Dick Skinner was instrumental in getting it.
Oh, my gosh. And we did, you know, we got 5% of the voting over, probably like 7% signatures just at the transfer station. We got chased a bit, too, but, you know, so, yeah, all right.
Appreciate you bringing that forward, keep us posted, and...
Yep, you bet.
Thank you.
Yeah, we probably should have like a Zoom informational meeting and things, you know, we, we have a meeting almost every week now, just trying to think of things, signs, and...
I would say anything that you could put on the Douglas access station, because then it adds a fun, so others can view it and stuff like that, it's always helpful.
Right.
You did an informational forum.
Yeah, more information, the better.
Right.
More informed.
That's all. Helps the public be aware of it.
All right.
You know? Thank you.
Great. Appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you.
We have counsel on aging appointments, Marilyn Corbin and Lisa Postma. Patrice was glad enough to tell us that COA supports these candidates.
Want to do it independently or together?
Let's do them together.
Nobody has any objections, I would make a motion to approve the COA appointments for Marilyn Corbin and Lisa Postma.
Seconded by Mike, seconded by Ross. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I get younger blood.
Moving on to the Police Department Support and Incentive Grants. We're accepting some money from the state's 911 operation, to the tune of $49,684 submitted by Chief Migliannico. And this is for the full-time dispatch salaries, overtime and per DM salaries.
If there's nothing else, I would make a motion to accept the grant for the Police Department Fiscal Year '25 Support and Incentive Grant of $49,684.
Seconded by Mike, seconded by Les, all those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent grant.
Item number 10, we got an email from our colleagues in Hope Dale, who were looking to take a deeper, more finer look at maybe working collaboratively in respect to BBT and the intermunicipal relations that we have. I did reach out to our colleague from Hope Dale, told him that I was available this week, I had not heard from him. I didn't know if this was something that Dr. Viera would be at or what, but, you know, absent anyone in the audience, Matt, what can you tell us that you may know?
Share this. I am aware that the superintendent was on the distribution list and has responded that he's interested, and I believe he's either got a school committee member or his business manager in tow on that. Sometimes it takes good ideas a while to come to fruition. Many of the issues that Hope Dale is dealing with right now, the questions they're asking in their community, questions we asked in Douglas five years ago, and we felt like we were on an island, nobody was on our side, we would don't know on the budget at town meeting for BBT, and all the other communities had already voted yes, and it was a very symbolic gesture that we were displeased with the admissions policy and the allocation You know, frankly, your position has not changed. The town of Douglas is still overrepresented in the student body at BBT. And I find it false praise from the BBT superintendent to say, well, it's because your schools do such a good job. So, fine, so then you steal however many of our, 100 of our high school age students, and then whack us with a bill, year to year, that goes up far faster than our levy does, as fast as that goes. So, our analysis, over a period of time, revealed, and this was under intense questioning from one particular member of the Finance Committee to Dr. Fitzpatrick over the course of two or three years, that he simply wasn't willing to divulge the means and methods of his recruiting process, even though his argument was circular, he would say, we're blind to what we do, so therefore we shouldn't change. Right? So it just became this self-perpetuating machine, he wasn't going to look into it, so it would just stay the way it was. And the other part of his dialogue always was, we have such a large pool of highly qualified candidates, it's often very small differences between them, that our decision between an admit and not admit. Well, if that's the case, then you could balance the population of your student body to more accurately reflect the population of the towns in the catchment area. So there was just this, we weren't going to get anywhere. And, you know, one of the lines of inquiry was very sharp, and it was whether or not those students who needed extra help, either in the form of an IEP or 504s, or English as a second language, were being given ample opportunity to apply and be admitted to BBT. And frankly, the answer was terrible. He didn't actually have an answer to that question or that concern. He's done, made some progress since then, but he still has nowhere near the population of needy students that we have to take as public school district in Douglas. So in the end of the day, I think a lot of us behind the scenes came to the conclusion that this agreement, the charter that forms the BBT catchment area and the school committee, is fatally flawed, that it is not really a democratic document. So the school committee is elected at large across the electorate of the entire catchment area, so people in Milford get to vote on who represents Douglas. And so we could never put enough voters in the voting booth. So if Douglas was unanimous that they didn't want someone, but Milford, through whatever political chicanery were to occur, had just enough votes to offset ours, they would, that candidate would still win, and Douglas's voice wouldn't be heard. That's a really big problem. If we can get some kind of progress with a couple of other communities towards addressing this issue, it is not a simple matter to amend this foundational document, it is very difficult. But it's, I don't believe you should give up, because at this point, you still have the same dynamic, which is a very expensive vendor walks into town hall at some point in the budget process, puts a number at the table and says it's non-negotiable. And that's, I don't think anybody should be allowed to operate that way without reference to what the community is able to bear. We're in a better spot than we were five years ago. Five years ago, that was a crushing thing, a 26.8% increase in one year crushed the budget. And it specifically crushed the Douglas public school budget, because that's where most of the money that we raise and appropriate goes. So that's what suffered the most. So I would encourage people in town and in the various decision-making bodies to participate with Hope Dale, but I don't really want to get into, I for one have little patience to start from square one with questions that we already were asked and answered some time ago, but they won't know that until we tell them.
Yeah.
So if we can go back, get those minutes and share that, but until you get five or six communities solid behind this, you're not going to see a lot of change.
That's good. All right. So movements afoot, Dr. Viera is aware, we in principle are supporting further discussion and look for five or six, nine communities to hop aboard, for sure. First look at Warren articles. Matt, I see you here. Are you here for scenic roads?
Yeah.
And...
Bounds.
The bounds piece. Seenic road seems pretty simple.
Yes, sir. So, good evening, Matthew Benoit, Director of Community Development. The Planning Board had asked me to put this forward, but they haven't formally voted on it yet. So I just put the draft together and presented it here this evening. All they're looking for is so that the tree warden has an exemption to take down unhealthy or dangerous trees within the right-of-way for scenic roads without having to come in for an application. Any other people that wish to do that within the right-of-way would have to file an application, that includes National Grid.
Just for our record, the tree warden down front hall.
Yep.
Or highways.
Hmm?
I'll talk to him.
Cool. That's one.
All right.
One's pretty straightforward.
Good.
And the meets in bounds?
Yeah, so the highway bounds, not, not...
One's pretty straightforward.
And the meets and bounds?
Yeah, so the highway bounds, not so straightforward. The memo I provided, you could pretty much throw that away, because I've learned a new history on this whole thing. So a motion was made in May of 2020 to allocate 12,500 for the purpose of selling highway bounds through Preservation Park. However, funds were expended in January 12, 2021, 12,500 for bounds at Shady, what's it called, Shady Knoll Estates for 28 bounds. And then it seems like the funds were carried over into when I was working here, starting in October of '21, for Preservation Park, and I commissioned that to be done. So 28 have been done at Shady Knolls, 28 have been done at Preservation Park. So my numbers weren't exactly spot on when I gave this to you. But this project, I thought this was a continued account, but it wasn't, and we'd just been so busy. So the planning board reminded me to get this going again. So I've submitted for a, we don't have any estimates on any of these right now, but if we wanted to get a bunch of these done, I asked for 20,000, just a number, if we're looking to increase it from the 12.5 or keep it at 12.5, whatever the board wants to do.
Would 12.5 be enough to accomplish anything?
So the 12.5 was not enough to do the 28 bounds at Preservation Park. There were four bounds that we weren't able to do. They were very difficult ones. Some of them were in boulders, one of them was in a wetland. This is, they were really hard to do.
Just an opinion, if you don't get, you don't ask for enough to complete a project and you go back again, it gets very confusing for the people at the town meeting.
Right.
And I think the other thing is, if the planning board decides to do, I mean, two of these subdivisions, which is calling out its request to do worksite drive, which is, it's got, it already has, so the plan shows 22 and it should be 35. Sometimes when the surveyor gets out there, they realize, oh, we don't need, you know, a bound on every property corner of every part of the town, or something like that. It may be worthwhile to probably put some language in there to kind of get the flexibility for the planning board to authorize them to determine what subdivisions based upon their priority.
Yeah.
I mean, and maybe group a bunch of subdivisions in there and let the planning board prioritize it based upon them, because you may finish off the project and then you may start another one. And they may determine that, even though it should have 35, maybe it can, 20.
Right.
You'd know if you'd been on it. So is it the practice to try to put a bound at every property?
No. What, from speaking from involvement in this, when it first got started and it got discovered, it was a neighbor that was trying to survey their property in one of the subdivisions here, I believe it was Shady Knolls. And there was not any funds left over from the developer. And there was just a person trying to figure out their property and put a fence or whatever else. So it's not on every corner. I think that's really determined by the surveyor who's hired, or engineer who's hired to put them out there and this discussed with the planning board.
Yep.
Because it came before the planning board and they said, okay, we're going to do these circle ones, we don't need that, because they'd be able to figure out line of sight. And the technology's changed for surveying, that's what the bounds are for.
No, I get all that. So I was just asking this question.
Just for folks at home. But, I mean, now with surveyings, GPS systems and stuff like that, but the bounds are important from that standpoint. You know, you don't have to align all three bounds in a line of sight. So. Great question.
So if I can finish, do we just need to put control points within the subdivision, not necessarily bounds? Because I heard, I heard the comment was at their property corners. So you only need a few control points within the subdivision, and sometimes the surveyor might have to walk more than 100 feet to get to where he's going to get. It's not unusual for him to see him, watch some Doo Depot street, they're up and down the entire street trying to pick up different points. So I just wanted to ask, make sure we're not going overboard with what we're doing for control points and that, that's all.
Sure. I wouldn't know this, it's just from our town engineer, this is what he put down on the plan. Like Brookside said, there's 22 on the plan and there should be 35. Is that overboard? I don't really know.
I think.
How many houses are on Brookside? You would live there?
Great question. I'd say it is probably 16.
So 35 sounds like a lot.
It sounds a lot, yeah, there was.
Sounds like a lot to me. For 16 pieces of property that have 35 bounds, what do we have next to their mailbox still?
No. I didn't hear that comment.
It's just money, money is hard to come by, right? So for different projects in town, so my only suggestion would be to be mindful and give some suggestion to the planning board to maybe look at that.
Sure.
Be a little more lenient as to how many they need instead of trying to go overboard.
Well, I think, you know, just through the chair, whatever was mentioned to Matt was just probably the dollar amount, I think is okay. It's just give the flexibility to the planning board to pick up some of these other projects, not just hone in on one.
Right.
Because if you allocate 20,000 for one subdivision and you realize that you only need half the money there, now you've got to go back to town meeting and figure out, you know, there's a whole other staff stand, so probably.
So we just, I don't know how you worded the Warren article, but it's a suggestion that the Warren article simply be open ended $20,000 for bounds?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's right. And that gives flexibility to the planning board.
Absolutely. Yep.
Just a quick question, Matt, that maybe, maybe off topic, but where this is a burden on the town, funding, would this be, or could this be a provision for future subdivisions? Where the developer puts these in?
The developers do.
Okay.
They are supposed to, moving forward, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know how these got missed, but at some point they weren't posting big enough bonds to get this work done.
And like Mike said, you really will need a few solid control points in order to subdivision to pull.
Yeah.
I can't resist the opportunity to speak on this question. One of the planning board's most important functions is the setting of surety. The surety must be in the form of an asset that is liquid enough for the town to utilize to finish the work required. So saying that we will just simply not release that lot, and that's your surety, doesn't help us pay for paving, bounds, today said they may be necessary, guardrails or other improvements.
Right.
So I will probably fight this fight until the ship goes down and there'll be bubbles coming out of my mouth as the ship goes down. But surety must be in the form of a bond or some other liquid asset, not real estate, not cash. Cash, you know, it's not a fan of cash at all, maybe it's my Rhode Island history, cash is not good. But a bond that we can call and have sufficient proceeds to finish the work contemplated by the subdivision. I think we went through a long period of time in this town where that was not the case.
Yeah.
Surety was insufficient. Surety would be set in year one, the project wouldn't be done till year 10, in which case surety was sufficient the day it was set, but when the project was finished, it was nowhere near enough money to finish the work. And contractors have in the past gone bankrupt, either because they created a small shell corporation that didn't have sufficient assets to finish a project, or because the market crashed and it was no fault of their own. So it is an art, and we just have to constantly be supportive of our planning board in setting fairly generous sureties, because it's pennies on the dollar to get the bond. But when we have to take over and finish the work, we have to do it at prevailing wage, it's expensive. There you go. I'm really underpired.
It's good.
Wearing out my Bible, pounding out.
So that it's going to be worked out. We're going to see, obviously, that in a more tightened form.
Yeah.
But when you say you needed to confirm whether these are there, how are you going to do that?
Just out in the field.
Just?
Yeah.
Go truck through the woods?
Yep. Mall site inspections on these roads. I mean, they're not too, not too hard to find them. So you just look at the approved plans, see if they're there. And Bill clearly did that for a lot of these already, so.
All right. Pick a couple of nice days and spend some time in Douglas.
Mm-hmm.
Out of the office. Cool. Anything else?
You are supposed to perambulate the bounds annually.
Yeah, right. This is true. Yeah.
Easy with the leaves off the trees. Good time of year.
We're orange.
Any other Warren article discussion? There's nothing in our packet, but.
I don't think so.
Yep. That'll be on our next few agendas anyway. Although, when are we closing that?
First meeting in October. I mean, I think it'll end up being second.
Yeah.
But in order to get my staff to get a wiggle on, we'll say the first week of October.
Yeah.
So Matt's here, Matt doing his thing.
Matt did his thing.
I have one more, but we'll see how that goes.
Yeah.
Be the ADU by law, if that happens.
So the ADU by law, we've got some work to do behind the scenes on that.
Yeah.
Just since we're talking about Warren by law, articles and stuff like that, the 900 square foot.
That's what I was just saying, the ADUs get more work to do on it.
Yeah. We have that at tech review tomorrow, so.
Yep. Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate your time, Matt. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
I was actually walking on a beach in Clearwater, Florida, listened to this meeting, and I have to say, it was a lovely walk.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion's been made by Ross to approve those minutes.
Seconded the motion.
Seconded by Les. Further discussion, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
The exception that I see in September 3rd is under number eight, but zoning appointment, My suggestion is either they are amended, or you need to review them as you suggested at the last meeting.
Review what?
You said, you could watch the tape and listen to the voices. I've watched the tape, listened to the voices, and my understanding of the September 3rd meeting was confirmed when I watched it. That's my opinion.
All right, well, the chair called it three, two, so we'll understand by those.
Skip over the minute for the September 3rd, we can hold it for another meeting versus approving time.
What are we going to, what do you want to do?
Well, we can hold off on approving the minutes for September 3rd. So our next meeting.
Well, you tell me, did you vote for it?
Yeah.
All right, then vote it.
I'll make a motion to approve the September 3rd minute, meeting minutes.
Made by Les. This is a curious, interesting question. So what happens? This doesn't pass, the meeting didn't happen?
Or we don't.
We just hold off until?
The question presented is whether or not the minutes reflect the transactions of the board of selectmen at the meeting, is the question presented.
Right.
So if you adopt the minutes, you're saying they do.
All right. Well, let's have a vote. I'll second, yeah, on the September 3rd minutes, further discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye. Opposed.
All right. So, interesting, I don't really know if I've ever seen that.
So I think what we do, for Open Meetings Act purposes, we would post the minutes as draft minutes to maintain compliance with the Open Meetings Act. And it is up to the board what you will do next.
In regards to that very matter? All right, then, very good. Your report, Matt?
So I would like to save most of my energy for executive session.
Good call.
I'm just going to make quick note that I am traveling to the ICMA conference. I've chosen the drive. Frankly, there's really no direct way to get to Pittsburgh, so it would take almost as long to fly, and I wouldn't have a vehicle in the city. So I'm just going to drive out.
Driving season along the way?
No, I'm taking the hybrid tank, just to get there on half a tank of gas, if that much. So the chief of police will be the acting town administrator Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. On Wednesday, we will have sort of an odd, he's going on vacation, but by the time he leaves Douglas, I'll be back in Southern New England. So we'll do our transfer of authority on the phone, I guess, and we'll be back in business. It's just, it's always been my philosophy, the town doesn't revolve around any one person or any one office, that the business of the town must go on unabated, so I always do this. Whenever I go away, the chief is always in charge. I always do that. That's all, that's all I'm going to say right now. I think a lot of what I've been thinking about and working on, we'll talk about an executive session, I see Pam is on, I just, I know Pam is Chris's secretary, executive session for this specific item that is referred to is an exemption under the Open Meetings Act for potential litigation. The select board will be discussing potential strategies around legal issues. Therefore, the minutes of this meeting will be sealed until that issue is either concluded without litigation, or if there is litigation, not until after litigation is. And attendance is by invitation only. I've invited our broker to participate in this conversation because there's context that the board must have in order to make informed decisions and be on the same informational level that I'm at, when we're trying to make decisions on this issue. So I don't, I feel bad that, hopefully Pam had something else to do, but she won't be able to go, just Chris, and we'll be in a different room without cameras.
Yep. Good lead-in, I'll take a motion to move into executive session for the purposes of discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respects to the Douglas Police Department, and also in regards to potential litigation, specifically MSHG, and then to leave executive session for the purpose of adjournment.
Sure.
Made by Ross, seconded by Les, roll call vote.
Smith, aye. Stephen, aye.
Patrick, aye.
Paul, aye. Good night, everybody.